And the East Amwell Planning Board reorganization meeting is being called to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, this is a regularly scheduled meeting pursuant to the resolution adopted on January 18th, 2024. A copy of this agenda for this meeting was posted to the township website on January 15th, 2025, posted on the bulletin board, and filed in clerk's office on January 15th, 2025. Ms. Emily Dedwiler.
Here.
Mr. Matthew Kohut.
Here.
Mayor Dante DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Jamal Cadri.
Here.
Ms. Township Committee Member, Al Nardi.
Here.
Mr. Richard Catonachi. Ms. Mary Van Horn. Ms. Candace Wiggum.
Here.
Mr. Michael McGovern.
Here.
And Ms. Maria Terese.
Here.
And now we will have Ms. Ms. Dragon.
Dragon.
Dragon Sweran, our reinstated member. Mr. McGovern.
Want to raise your hand and repeat after me? I, Michael McGovern.
I, Michael McGovern.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of New Jersey.
And of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of planning board member.
Of the office of planning board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. It would be a party afterwards.
It would be a party.
Yeah, welcome back to the party here.
Thank you. And now, may I have a nomination for chairperson?
I'd like to nominate Emily Dedwiler.
I second it.
Wonderful. And may I have a vote? Are all in favor of voting for Emily Dedwiler as the chairperson?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Emily.
I do took one. I took one. I have to have an agenda because basically it's my cheat sheet. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. I'm gonna just get through this to the reorg, and then if we want to make some statements or have any conversation, we'll do that, if that's okay. May I have a nomination for vice chair?
Can I nominate Matt?
Matt Kohut.
Second.
Any others? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. MacKohut. Um, next one is a motion to approve the 2025 meeting schedule.
Just by talk.
Just a couple things I wanted to note before we do this. Um, one is we are moving our meetings to the third Tuesday of each month. It used to be the third Monday of each month, except for when there is a holiday. Now they will, for this year, for 2025, and only 2025, as of now, they will be the third Tuesday of each month. We're also adding two additional meetings this year, January 28th, 2025, which is next week, and March 25th, 2025. And that was essentially to try to get, catch up on some of the backlog. We've got quite a number of applications pending. And so, rather than having to have our applicants, you know, help pay for special meetings, it gives us this option. If we don't need them, we will cancel them. And I didn't want to go further and start adding a bunch of meetings because I don't really know who's going to be available. So that's where we are on that one. So with that, may I, do, may I have resolution numbers? I don't need that. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the 2025 meeting schedule as I just described?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good. Good to go. Okay. Next up, our professionals. I want the record to reflect that, actually, no. I'll say this later. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the hiring of, can I say Sharon Dragon?
Dragon.
Dragon? I always do this. And I asked.
We have to have you use the right connotation.
Oh, yeah. Sharon Dragon, as planning board chair for the year 2025.
As attorney?
Would you like to be the chair? Would you like to, may I have a motion to approach? To.
I move that we approve Sharon Dragon.
Thank you.
As planning board attorney for the year 2024, 25.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Get out the right year.
To the end of the year.
You got a second.
You got a second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, that should have been easier. I'm looking forward to working with the board. Okay. May I have a motion to approve James Kyle from Kyle McManus as planning board planner for the year 2025?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And last, but certainly not least, may I have a motion to approve Rob O'Brien as planning board engineer for the year 2025? I make a motion? Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will note for the record that that went more smoothly than last year. May I have a motion to approve the Hunterdon County Democrat as the East Amwell Planning Board's designated newspaper? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
I know there's conversation about whether there'll be a newspaper, but at this point we will for the record.
Yeah, the situation right now is at least till the end of, I think it's March. The, you, you still will have these newspapers. They'll just be digitally published. And so, there's a hold on them being able to do anything right now. But we'll see what happens then time. But at least we've got publication happening, so. And then everybody who gets their notices, like if they're adjoining property owner, they'll still get their notices by the mail. Things will still be on the website, so.
May I, apparently, this is not on the printout, at least on mine. A motion to approve Robert's rules of order, with the exception of the board recognizing members of the public to provide information out of turn. May I have a motion to approve?
Before we ask, Kristin seems to have a call.
Okay.
My apologies. That is a state law. It's not necessary to have that on the reorganization, so I had a revised version published today.
Okay. Okay. But does that still allow the flexibility that we discussed just now?
Yes. We were discussing bylaws, I believe.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So with that, I think I have, that's it for all of the reorg. Does anyone wish to have, make a statement, and then I'm going to open it to the public?
Well, I'd just like to thank our three professionals. They all have excellent credentials. You know, we've, we've enjoyed the work of our engineer through last year, and we have two new professionals who I think are going to add a lot with their experience and working together with the board. So I'd just like to say I appreciate them all.
Thank you. Yes. And I just want to tell you that when you brought up, and when we had our last meeting and you, and this was not in public session, so now I'm gonna, you mentioned that you wanted us to look for new planner, I wanted to kill you. Not quite kill you, but I was just like, but I'm actually really, really happy where we ended up. Took a little bit of work, and, but I'm really happy, so. Just want that on the record.
Right. Okay.
Don't cry.
Not literally kill.
Not literally. Dante knows that. Anything else? Anyone else want to say anything? I just want to say I thank you all for, for your confidence, I guess. And I will continue to try to do my very best. We have a full, a full year and quite a few things that we're going to need to work on and try and keep everything running smoothly. And I'm really glad, Matt, that you're here. With that, may I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Open to the public? Anyone have anything? Going once, going twice? Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Without objection, we're closed to the public. This meeting, the reorganization meeting is complete and adjourned, and we will now move to the regular meeting. I don't think I need to, do I need to call this to order?
No, you might as well.
You can call it to order. Okay. You don't have to do the. The flag salute, okay. Calling to order the East Amwell Township Planning Board meeting for January 21st, 2025. Call to order. We've done the flag salute. Should I read? Say it's been compliance again. Yeah. Want to read the statement of compliance?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, this is a regularly scheduled meeting pursuant to the resolution adopted on January 16th, 2024, with a meeting notice sent to the Hunterdon County Democrat on January 18th, 2024. A copy of the agenda for this meeting was posted to the township website on January 15th, 2025, posted on the bulletin, and filed in clerk's office on January 15th, 2025.
I don't think we need to retake attendance. The same people that were here for reorg are now here for regular meeting. Review of the agenda. The only thing I wanted to just note is that the applicant, we won't be hearing the Monahan application. That will be continued till next month. And the Jersey Sports application is a zoning officer, is a zoning application. So I did take, I did move the invoices for approval and the presentation of minutes up, in case you two want to go home and don't want to wait around.
We would, we would love to participate, but we understand the rules with use variances don't allow us, but we would be willing.
And I also wanted to give you the opportunity, after we open to the public, I guess, let me see where we are. Yeah, after we open to the public. If there's anything in your oral reports that you want to provide updates on, I'll give you the opportunity to do that. But first, may I have a motion to open to the public for items not on this agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Anyone? All in favor? Open to the public for items not on the agenda.
Yeah. Yes, we were voting, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that part. I'm telling you.
All in favor, right?
All in favor? Open to the public for items not on the agenda. I forgot that part. Going once, going twice? And may I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are closed to the public. Okay. We'll go through presentation of minutes. So the September 16th, 2024 minutes are ready. The others are being carried. We, as you know, we are behind. May I have a motion to approve the September 16th, 2024 meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have no resolutions for approval. Invoices for approval. There is a very long list of invoices. And that is in part because all of our professionals getting their invoices in before the end of the year. Kristin, did you upload some of these late? I just want to.
The only one that was added today would be Van Cleef invoice.
I didn't have a chance to look at them, and I know that at least one other board member didn't have a chance, so I actually want to pull that.
There's only the one 3916004-6.
So that would be.
Jersey Sports. It's number 13.
Thirteen. I'm going to pull that one because I know that not everyone had a chance to look at them. Everything else was there. I, I went through them. Is there any other concerns? Dante?
I know I'm.
You're good?
Yeah.
May I have a motion to approve the invoices 1 through 12?
So moved.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Invoices approved.
Emily, will we look at the Van Cleef invoice next week, then?
Probably. If not, we'll get to it next, in February. And I'm just, next week, if we're, if we have, we'll look at the, let's see where we are at the end of this meeting, and then we'll circle back. All right. Thank you. No, I, I don't like holding them like that, but I also want to make sure people have a chance to look at them. With that, Mr. DePiero, is there anything you want to update before you? Just want to give you that opportunity.
Other things here?
Or anything you want to hear about?
That's true. Yeah, thank you. I didn't have the list. So Al's reminded me on historic preservation ordinance, so we did put that up initially to consider introducing it, but we'd gotten some comments from, from members of the Township Committee and also from the public, so we're going to consider that some more before we move forward with an introduction.
Were there specific concerns that we should be trying to address, or is it just a matter of?
Well, I think, like, Mike Dennis, for example, is having a discussion with, with Tam about some of the things that have come up. So I think people who had some questions were asking her since she had drafted initially to help the, the planning board. So, yeah, so I think some of those issues, I think, are being discussed.
Okay.
Based on that, we'll see how we proceed.
Okay. And just to bring it to speed, we have a, we sent to the Township Committee a historic preservation ordinance, in part creates an, it creates an overlay, has a couple other requirements which I'm blanking on right now. I know it has requirement that you could knock down a historic, historic building, gives us a notice, and there was one other thing. But anyway, that's.
There were some guidelines that.
Oh, yeah, that's what, that's the important part.
Architectural guidelines that were intended, I think, by the drafters to be just guidance, but there was some concern that the language didn't make clear enough that they were guidelines rather than mandatory standards. In addition, would give us the authority to, as a town, to weigh in on bridges, for example, because the counties, the county may take action on bridges, but we don't have input in that process.
Is that a different project, though, the bridge project, or is it in the?
Well, there was some language that was added in there. So, you know, in terms of the things that were sought to be achieved, one was some, some guidelines on, on architectural standards. Truly as guidelines, there was, including bridges as something we could look at. And then, we don't actually have historic preservation zones in town. We, we have districts that are recognized on the federal level. So the thought was to consider recognizing those same districts on the municipal level, so we'd have some authority. But some of the issues also were, you know, how exactly does that play through? You know, is it only when the planning board is considering an application? And then Candy had a point on how do we do education so that we educate residents? So there were just a number of things out there that folks had questions about, so. But those are the concepts.
Well, I appreciate the update, and we'll probably, I'm, I would like to, I want to make sure we get that through because I want to learn from that. If there are things that the planning board is sending you that don't get through, what work we can do. So I appreciate the update. Anything else?
I, I think we mentioned last time the traffic calming efforts that the Township Committee is doing in Ringo's Village. In case anyone didn't get a chance to listen to the Township Committee meeting, we had tried to get some traffic calming measures in place, specifically some restriping of the areas where the county road and the state road converge right in our Ringo's downtown. And the, the state was totally on board and ready to go forward. However, the county wanted more data. And so they wanted us to wait. So unfortunately, what that means is we have to wait until after winter to do something because now it's too cold. But on the good side, the county did put out some detectors to detect amount of traffic and speed, and they're going to be compiling that data. We feel strongly, people who have, you know, seen the cars flying through the downtown, that that's going to show that there's a need to, to institute some of these measures. So we'd like to start with the restriping and then move to things like the speeds limits throughout that whole area, going a bit beyond north and southeast to that one intersect, that one overlaid road. And then also some signage, both on the pavement, flashing signs for pedestrians across, all those kinds of things. So we've made some progress, but didn't quite move as fast as I thought we were about to get. So that is in process, but the planning board obviously is concerned about the conditions in downtown Ringo's. And so by way of update, we're getting some more data. We'll then meet up again with the state DOT and with the county and traffic engineers and look at data, then try to move things forward in the next several months. So I think those are the two biggest line use ones. Unless Al comes up with anything else.
I appreciate it. Anything else before, before we reconstitute as a zoning board?
I think you guys did a great job in 2025, or 2024.
Thanks for the photocopy. I'm glad 2025 went well. I don't want to age that fast.
We're 2025 up till now.
We've got Sharon as chair, and it went great. Okay. I will, thank you so much.
All right. So we'll need to recuse ourselves.
Yes, yeah. We will reconstitute.
Use variance, so.
See you next week.
Good luck, and thank you. Nice to meet you.
You too.
See you next week.
Yep, thank you. Thank you. I don't want to make them wait around for hours. Okay, so first item on the agenda, under unfinished business, is the Robert Monahan matter. That will be continued until February 18th, 2025, the regularly scheduled meeting. And then next up, we have Jersey Sports LLC, 1030 Route 202, Block 16, 1901, preliminary and final site plan approval, use variance with both variances.
And, Madam Chairman, I know this has been carried from the December meeting.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
But I did check the notices, and everything was in order with respect to that. So you have jurisdiction to proceed.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of board. It's good to be back. Happy New Year, everybody. Hope you had a wonderful holiday. Tonight, I'm here representing the applicant, Jersey Powers Sports LLC. And we're here with regard to our application concerning 1030 Route 202, and that's your Block 16, Lot 19.01 within your town. My client's currently under contract to purchase the property, and that purchase is obviously contingent upon this board's approval or hopeful approval of our application. And we spent a great deal of time and money getting to this point, so we're hopeful that you're going to like what we're proposing to you. And we have a very good, we believe, presentation to make to you tonight. We're very interested in this property, and my client is very interested in bringing their facility, which has been in operation for quite some time, to the township and hopefully making it as profitable here as it currently is in its current location, which is in the borough of Flemington, not too far from here. The property we're looking at is in your H.O. Highway Office District. And what my client does is they sell agricultural equipment and vehicles, as well as other recreational vehicles. And you'll hear a great deal of testimony from them to know exactly how they currently operate, how they're going to continue to operate in that fashion, and what their plans are for this property. One of the other things we've done, as you'll see by the engineering and the architectural plans, as well as our planning testimony, is we've tried a great deal to embrace the agricultural nature of this township. Somebody really wants to see you. So we've really tried to make this something that would fit into your township and something that, again, you'd be proud to have within your boundaries. And you'll, you'll see exactly how we've, we've tried to do that. We do need some relief tonight, despite trying our very best to fit in within your ordinance. We do need a use variance, which is why you're here operating tonight as a zoning board. And that's for the proposed use, but you will hear testimony from our planner as to how this use is appropriate, particularly suited for this property, and again, how we believe it would be a great benefit to you and the township. We also need a D6 variance for the height. You have a 20-foot height permitted in this zone. We're proposing 35 feet. And again, that's really due to the vehicles and the proposed use that we have as the idea for this property. We need some C variances as well. The C variances are for some conditions with regard to parking, wall signage, front yard setback, and buffering. And you'll hear testimony from both our engineer and our planner as specifics with regard to those issues. We are hopeful at the end of our presentation, and obviously any questions and comments that you may have that might make our development of this property better or more suited in your eyes, but we are hopeful that you will look favorably on the application. Excited to proceed.
Okay. How many witnesses do you have tonight?
Uh, we have four.
All right. Want to swear them all in at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. And also do that for the professionals for the board, too, so we can just have you sworn in all at once. All right. So you all want to raise your right hands? You swear that the testimony that you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you. First witness I have this evening is the representative of the applicant, Mr. William Bardis. Mr. Bardis, can you state your name and address for the board?
My name is William Bardis. My home address is 46 Dunkirk Church Road, Stockton, New Jersey.
And what is your relationship to Jersey Powers Sports?
I'm the owner.
And how long have you owned the LLC?
I started the LLC in 2017, so it's been eight years now.
Could you just explain what type of operations Jersey Powers Sports is?
We currently sell new and used agricultural equipment, as well as we sell parts, apparel, and we perform most of our reporting activities.
So when you say agricultural equipment, give me some idea of the vehicles that you sell.
Yep. We sell tractors. We sell lawn mowers, also large lawn mowers for large properties. We also sell ATVs and UTVs, which a lot of farmers would need.
And you've been.
I was saying, we, we also sell go-karts and dirt bikes as well.
And you've been selling those types of equipment since you started operating?
That's correct.
Okay. Where do you currently operate?
We're at 76B Regal Avenue in Flemington.
And you've been there since?
We've been there since June of 2014.
Any issues operating having that location?
Nope.
Ever had any complaints, ever had any, any problems with parking, or any violations or anything like that? Ever been issued?
No, it's not.
And you, you like your operations there?
Yep. Yep.
Why are you looking to relocate?
We're basically expecting a 50% increase in our new location. Currently, our facility is at max capacity, so we're kind of at a holding pattern right now, so we're just looking to expand.
Okay. And you were looking at a bunch of different areas, a bunch of different properties?
That's correct. Yeah, I've been around this area for as long as I can remember, so being in the vicinity of this location is, I think, the perfect opportunity, especially with the nurseries right next door.
So that's one of the things you like. What else did you like about the property?
I liked that it was open land and really would allow us to be part of the community and also really facilitate what we need to do.
So you're looking to expand. You need to design a new facility, correct?
That's correct.
You've been working with your professionals in order to do that?
Yes.
And you're going to bring in here some testimony tonight from your engineer and your architect about what you're proposing. Are you pleased with what you've come up with?
Yes, very.
And you believe that that will adequately allow you to grow to the 50% capacity that you look at?
Yes, it is.
How many employees do you currently have?
We currently have nine employees.
And how many would you have in this application or project you weren't moved?
I would say we'd be looking at a 12 to 14 employees. I would say we'd be looking at a twelve to fourteen employees. Not right away, but as we increase business, we will need more help.
Why don't you describe the types of delivery vehicles that would service the site? When we talk about delivery vehicles, we're talking about vehicles that would deliver the vehicles that you're selling, and as well as things like FedEx and things like that.
Yep. So essentially, we have one Ford F-150 and one F-250 for all of our sales deliveries. And then during busy months, we would probably get about one eighteen-wheeler a month, just for restock. In the off-season, which is kind of the winter months, maybe it would probably be one eighteen-wheeler every couple months. We get regular packages, as anyone else would, at their home, but that's every couple days or so.
So let's stick with the eighteen-wheelers and the deliveries of the vehicles. How many vehicles do you have on site currently at any one time? About?
That we sell?
Yes.
I would say we have about eighty to a hundred machines in our facility.
And about how many sales do you think you do per week?
Per week? We're definitely a seasonal business, but if I had to average it, I would say somewhere between five and seven per week, somewhere in there. Busy months could definitely be more, but...
Okay, what are your busy months?
So we have the spring, there's a lot of tractor sales, that kind of thing. Also, the winter would be tractors. But I would say end of February to June, July would be our busiest month, months. And then we have a little bit of a slump in August, September, and then we ramp up again for Christmas, and January and February are fairly slow.
So explain what happens when someone comes onto your property to purchase a vehicle?
They'll come in, we'll talk to them, show them their machine that they're interested in, or if they want to get apparel, parts, we'll help them with that. But typically, we will have people come in to purchase a machine, we'll help them out, we'll get them loaded up, and get them on their way.
Does someone usually know what they're looking for when they come in?
Not all the time. Sometimes people kind of look at us as the experts, so we will tell them, hey, I don't think this machine's right for you, maybe you have too much land, too little land, and we really try to tailor them and give them what's best for them.
Once you walk around the site with them, show them what you have available, and answer their questions?
Yep.
Do they get the opportunity to try the vehicles?
Yes, yeah, for a very short period of time. We try not to, you know, be making up a holster and whatnot in town, so.
So how exactly would that work?
Essentially, the customer currently would just maybe take it for a little test drive around our parking lot, and then park the machine, and that's it.
You don't have vehicles idling on site for long periods of time?
No, we currently have a forklift, which would be used for operations, but really, it's no louder than a regular car. And then, I mean, the highway adjacent to us is louder than that, so.
So when you say you have a forklift, explain how that works.
The forklift would be used to just pick a machine that maybe we're, we have in storage, or that we need to assemble. We would just take it from our storage area, put it inside, assemble it, and that's basically the use for the forklift.
Or if there was a vehicle somewhere on site that someone wanted to see, you could bring it out from that location, and bring it out for the customer to take a look at?
Yes, definitely.
So really, for maneuvering the vehicles around the site, that's what you would use the forklift with?
Yeah, just stuff that regular manpower couldn't do.
You mentioned that the adjacent highway is louder than the vehicles on the property. Is that the way, is it your current location?
Yes, definitely.
And you would expect that that would be the same at the proposed location as well?
Correct.
And never had any noise complaints at your current location?
Never.
And just describe your current location to the board. Are you a stand-alone facility, or are there other tenants in your, in the building where you are?
So we do have one other tenant attached to us, it's National Pool and Spa. They sell pools and hot tubs.
We're across from Five Guys, right?
Yes, yeah.
Never any problems with any of the other tenants?
No, never.
Any problems, is that a shared parking arrangement there?
That's correct.
Ever had any parking issues, or sharing parking issues?
No, not at all.
And how many parking spaces do you have, are you currently in?
We have twelve parking spaces.
And ever had a problem with the nine employees and your visitors with those twelve spaces?
No, not really. But we've, really, when, we don't have a lot of people in at once, since these are fairly large purchases, so we don't have, it's not like a mall, so not a lot of people.
That's a good point. How about your hours of operation?
We are Monday through Friday, nine to six. Saturday is ten to five, and then Sunday we are closed.
So the employees that are working, and I'm talking about your current facility, are they all working at once? Are they in shifts during those times?
So we're all working at once, Monday through Friday. Saturday, we definitely scale it down a bit. About, we have about five employees on a Saturday.
And again, never had any issues with the number of parking spaces or anything like that?
Nope.
Are you, will you be increasing the number of parking spaces up in your location?
Yes, we will.
Do you happen to recall how many are going to propose?
Close to double.
So, but we're not doubling the employees, right? You anticipate going from nine to about twelve to fourteen ultimately?
Correct.
Let's talk about repairs. Do you do any equipment repairs, if you're currently working?
We do.
You expect to do that in your new location as well?
Yes.
What type of repairs?
It's general maintenance. For the most part, it's just, all of it's programmed inside, so we keep everything contained, and it keeps the noise down as well.
Is there ever been need to do any sort of repairs outside?
No, not really. Yeah, the building is designed to get up to the inside.
One thing I don't think we talked about, but the board may want to know, as far as gas, oil, that sort of thing on site, obviously the vehicles need to operate, can you just explain what type of liquids you keep on site when you do that?
Primarily gas, diesel, and oil.
And how are they contained?
The gas and diesel, they would be kept in a cage. As per the requirement of the fire department, they have requirements for special fireproof safety cabinets. And then the oil gets sent out to recycling. That would be stored in a, it's basically like a fifty-five gallon drum, essentially that they come and they pump out. You know, about once a month, they pump that out to go to recycling.
Do you do oil changes on the vehicles?
We do.
So you mentioned the fire department. They come out to your current facility and approve your containment and your use of the vehicles?
Correct, yeah, we are inspected fairly often.
Okay. And that would be in compliance with both local and state requirements, correct?
Correct.
And you would anticipate that would be the same going forward?
Yep.
Okay. You said you worked with the engineer and the architect to design the building. What were some of the things you were concerned about, other than obviously operations? But what else were you concerned about making sure happened?
Really, just the whole facade of the building. I wanted it to look like an outdoors, agricultural, kind of like barn style to it, really to fit with the area, but also with what I'm doing. And then I wanted to make sure it had a lot of glass for good lighting, and I wanted it to just be visually appealing. I also wanted the doors to be large, to really, again, keep everything contained and inside.
And you believe this facility will fit your operations properly?
Absolutely.
And will satisfy the expansion needs that you're looking for?
Yes.
Are you proposing any signage?
Yes.
And your architect has a depiction of the signage that you're looking to do, correct?
He does.
So you're wearing anything that has a...
That would be my logo.
And is that the logo you're currently using?
Yes.
Okay, and that's what you've been using since?
Since I formed the business.
Kind of jumped around a little bit. Okay, one, there were a couple technical review letters that were issued in this matter, and one of the questions I have for you based on that is, was a question concerning the proposed ground surface cover for the outdoor equipment storage area. So first, let's talk about the vehicles that you mentioned. Right now, they're all currently stored outdoors?
Not all of them, just primarily our agriculture equipment, the tractors and things of that nature that will not fit inside of our building.
So one, if the board were to approve the new facility, what would be stored outdoors?
You'd be looking at tractors, you'd be looking at attachments for the tractors, and maybe a couple crates of mowers, but past that, that would be it.
The others would all be stored?
Indoors.
Indoors.
Yep.
So the ground cover for the area where you're looking to store, do you recall what that's proposed to be right now?
I believe it's proposed to be the pavers, I believe, or is it gravel?
I think it's proposed to be grass, if you go into it a little bit more. But you bring up the pavers, grass pavers. If that was something that the board would be interested in, would that be something that you'd be amenable to?
Yes, absolutely.
Or even gravel, or something along those lines as well?
Yep, absolutely.
Would that be a little bit easier to maneuver the vehicles on?
Yeah, yeah, our forklifts, we definitely have trouble on grass, so.
What type of surfaces are currently at your current location for that?
It's all asphalt.
All asphalt, okay. That was there when you started operating?
Correct.
Okay, and then, I think I just had one other question. We were kind of talking about something that might bring, again, a little more of an agricultural nature to the, to the development and to your facility. Did you have an idea for what we might look to put in the front of the property to attract people to your business?
Yes, yeah, so I noticed at the surrounding nurseries, Sweet Valley has antique tractors out front, and then across at Rutgers, they have a nice facade, that they don't have a tractor, but I figured, following suit, we could put a tractor out front, and then it'd give that agricultural life.
And did you give me a picture of one that you might be able to use?
Yep.
Could we mark that as exhibit?
Yes, I just wanted to identify it now.
A one, and just, okay.
So we'll identify this as exhibit A one.
And that, you said, is a picture of a...